All right, welcome all to our December 1st Town Board meeting. I'd like to call a meeting order, please rise with pleasurable reasons. Thank you. And tonight, the invocation will be given by Pastor Bill Rose from the very active church Oasis of Holly Springs. Come on down. Thank you for coming.
Well, appreciate you. Before I pray, I'd like to just say thank you to councilwomen and men for your leadership this year. It's been one of the most difficult years, I think, that any leader could experience, and you've done a tremendous job, even amidst political turmoil, of just leading us well. And I just want to say thank you. You've handled yourselves really well, so. Father, I'm grateful for my friends here and, God, I thank you for this great town. I'm really grateful that we are still seeing progress, even when many in our nation are at a standstill. Father, I pray for wisdom where it is necessary. Lord, today, as we make decisions and consider implications for our town, I pray for for vision where there is lack. Lord, I thank you for for giving us insight when we need perspective. And I pray, Father, that every decision's made today, Lord, that we would remember that behind all the paper pushing are lives and people and families. And well, I thank you for our leadership and I thank you for the citizens of this great town. And I pray that you would continue to bless and put your hand on us as women and men. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you again, Pastor. I'm number four, adjustment approval of the December 1st 2020 meeting agenda, Mayor Protem.
Make a motion to approve the December 1st 2020 agenda with no changes.
Okay. Motion made in same law favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda is vote comment period, and as you know, during COVID-19, this has been done prior to sending to our town clerk. And Madam Clerk, what do we have?
We received one comment asking that the oak tree at Ramcat Village be preserved.
Thank you very much. Item number five, request of communication. This is the holiday events update. And we're just happy as a lark to have Cassie Hack, Director of Communications and Marketing, here with us tonight.
Hi, Mayor Sears and councilmembers. So happy to be here tonight to talk about a positive thing, all the lovely holiday events that we're going to be having this December. May look a little bit different from years past, but we're very excited about what we have coming up. As you can see, starting next week, so next week is when all the festivities start. The Happy Holidays Tree Trail at Ting will start Thursday, goes from Thursday, Friday and Saturday from noon until 9:00 PM.
Ms. Hack, if you'll hold just one second, I think we're having some difficulty with monitors. Can you still check me? I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Okay, just Councilmember Wolf.
IT, is IT in the building?
Hey Jeff, don't stop on my account.
Hey Jeff. Sorry to interrupt. Yeah?
I'll paint you a picture, councilman, of what you can see.
I'm gonna share with Randy in the meeting.
Okay.
You didn't pay your dues. I'll check it out. Here's Matt, timeout.
Hopefully it's not just there.
Please tell me the power button.
But that's what I thought.
Thank God it's not. Oh, no. Turned it on and off. All right, sorry, everybody.
I think we're ready now, Cassie.
Okay, so we're gonna start next week, so mark your calendars, next Thursday, Friday and Saturday. The Happy Holidays Tree Trail at Ting. It's gonna go from noon until 9:00 PM. We're gonna have up to 50 decorated trees that many organizations, businesses, families have decorated for the holidays. And you can walk in there with your family, socially distanced, everybody wearing masks. And you can go to the concession stand and get hot chocolate. It's just a lovely, kind of hallmark family moment when you can walk around and enjoy the holiday season. We are also gonna have some socially distanced performances playing while we're there. The Holly Springs School of Dance, some of the many churches in our area are gonna have performers, so it should be really a fun time for everyone. We also have a really cool thing this year that we're doing called the Decorations Drive Thru. If you guys haven't heard about that, it's gonna be running from December 13th through the 25th. And after decorating your home or business, folks can submit their addresses and a photo to be included on a map that we're gonna host on our website. And on our website, we will also have links to Apple Maps and Google Maps that will show you exactly where to go. So you could be in your car and you can go to all the various holiday decorations around town. So we're excited about that. Also coming up, we have the Polar Express Drive-In Movie. That's gonna be Friday, December 11th at 7:00 PM at Sug Farm. And tickets can be purchased online and at the Cultural Center. It's only $20 per vehicle, so as many people you have seatbelts for can come in with your vehicle. And I have heard through the grapevine, there are 20 tickets left. So if you're interested, I would try to get a ticket pretty soon. Also, we have Santa's Mailbox, which we have every year, and that's going on right now through Sunday, December 13th. Children can write letters to Santa and place it in the mailbox, it's right outside Town Hall. The Holly Springs Run Club is gonna be running those letters to the North Pole, so Santa can mail his response. So that's always a hit every year. Also, the tree lighting is gonna be Thursday, next Thursday, December 10th at 6:00 PM at the Holly Springs Cultural Center. And it will be livestreamed on Facebook, which could be a good way for people to see that from home. Santa and Mrs. Claus will join the mayor at 6:00 PM to light the tree. And afterward, Santa and Mrs. Claus will be visiting Ting Park from 6:30 to 8:00 for socially-distanced photos. So that's a new one, so that should be a fun opportunity. Also, I have a, we haven't talked about this before, so this is new and very exciting. Beginning next Monday, our fire department has offered to drive Santa around Holly Springs throughout the month of December. And children throughout the town will be able to come outside and wave and say hi to Santa, you know, in a socially-distanced way. So instead of you, a lot of people normally bring their kids to Santa, this time, we're gonna have Santa come to you, to your neighborhood. Specific dates and maps for neighborhoods are gonna be released probably a little bit later this week on our website and social media, so stay tuned to see when Santa will be in your community. And then, giving back, we always have so many opportunities for people to give back here in Holly Springs. I want to let people know that the Note in the Pocket organization is still accepting donations of new underwear and socks in the lobby of Town Hall, and the last day to drop off those items is this coming Friday. We've already finished our Christmas store donations, but the police department is still accepting donations for Shop with a Cop and the Angel Tree at the Law Enforcement Center. So please visit our website for more details on any of these events, and does anybody have any questions about what's coming up?
Questions or comments to Cassie? I think it's terrific.
This is terrific. Do you have a schedule for who's singing and dancing at Santa?
I just saw one today, so I can make sure people get. Yeah.
Anybody else?
Love Pirates of Santa. When I lived in Virginia, our town did the same thing, and my kids love it. Looking forward to the next decision.
Chief Smith is very excited to host this.
Thanks, Cassie.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate. Item number six, public hearing voluntary annexation, A20-07, 1637 Evenberry Road. Melissa Sigmund, Development Services. Hi, Melissa.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Council. This evening's item, we do have a request for annexation, and our action tonight would be to conduct the legislative public hearing and then adopt the associated annexation ordinance. So the property in question is located at 1637 Evenberry Road. This is a single-family residential property of approximately 2.2 acres. As you can see, it is currently located in our extraterritorial jurisdiction, so ETJ. So it's not immediately adjacent to our town limits, but it is in very close proximity. And as you can see, it is located down on Evenberry Road, a bit south of Casts Falls Road. And with that, we would ask you to open the public hearing.
Is there any questions before? I don't think so. Right? We will open and close the public hearing, since no one's signed up, any further discussion? Seeing none.
Motion to adopt annexation ordinance A20-07, annexing 2.21 acres owned by Sharon Griffin and Greg Griffin.
Second.
Motion made in same law, twice. On favor.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm passing unanimously, thank you. Thank you, Melissa. Item number seven, consent agenda, Mayor Protem, Dan Berry.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I was pleased to see that our summer schedule made it into the meeting calendar for next year, reduced summer schedule, that is. So thank you to the town manager for that, and with that satisfaction, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion made in same law, favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously, thank you. Item number 13, new business title revisions to Town of Holly Springs Code of Ordinances, Chapter 8 Environmental, Articles 4, or excuse me, 5, 8, and Adoption of Greenage Policy, P-047. And that would be Daniel Calavito, Utilities and Infrastructure. Hi, Daniel.
That was a mouthful, huh?
Just the title itself.
Right, yes. So we, just an ordinance update primarily around the language needed for the fee structure change that's going into effect in January. As part of that, as we discussed at the previous workshop, we wanted to go ahead and get our policy adopted as well, so we can start to objectively understand when we may perform work outside of the right of way. So we'll talk a little bit about that. While we were in there, we wanted to go ahead and update some terminology. That's like more of an update in Chapter 8 than just enterprise fund question. Most of that surrounds our recent realignment, changes with the state agencies, changes in stormwater terminology, that sort of thing. No big deal there. Just to highlight, we do have that ERU set at 2930 square feet. And that will be flat rate for residential, and that will be the unit that can use to calculate the rated non-residence for commercial properties. There is a section in there about fee crediting. We did take the consultant recommendations, so if someone that wants to come in and treat up to 100% over our standards or if they can retrofit their property, they would be eligible for a fee credit. And that would be based on sort of an engineering sliding scale. So it would be taken in by Utilities and Infrastructure. We would vet it to make sure it meets the intent, and then the ultimate credit would be decided by the environmental field committee. We did do some language to clean up the appeal committee, the way it's listed in the ordinance. It just, it matched what we were doing, but it wasn't implicitly outlined. So we wanted to make sure that we had the appropriate language here, so we were actually doing exactly what was in the ordinance. Just as a reminder, around that ERU there, we have those one single-family residents. And our consultant determined that the 2,930 square feet was the average impervious extent of our houses. And our average non-residential user is typically around eight, nine, 10 units. We're seeing a good spread in that middle ground, there between 25,000 and 35,000 square feet. So that's how those rates are calculated. As a reminder, we will be looking into the equity for our residential users in the coming years. So hopefully, we can get some better information on our residential service, so we can do do a tiered system probably, just what will happen. And that could in turn adjust the ERU that we charge our visitors. We wanna, we're moving towards equity with the increased fee for the non-residential users. We want to move to a fully equitable model. The policy council's had a chance to have a look at. It has been well-vetted and well-worked on by staff and legal. We've been working on this policy for the better part of two years now, I guess. And this is, this is very useful on a staff level, because it allows us, as we defer to citizen concerns, to really be able to give our residents a more concrete answer of where they stand in our priorities and how we prioritize things. It also sets an expectation of if we were to entertain working outside of the right of way on private properties, what the expectation would be of the residents. So that would entail things such as dedicating a public easement. If there were any senses to be removed, who would be responsible? If there's any long-term maintenance, an inlet at the back of someone's property that we'd expect them to be cleaned, et cetera. All of that would be outlined. Just for a little follow-up on the next step, we have did a lot of public aid and outreach. Thank you, Cassie, and Economic Development. The feedback, honestly, has been really positive. Of course, the scale hasn't went out yet, so you're prepared to receive those calls. But I think that the general feedback has been that people are glad to see that we're being proactive, and they see the need, especially people that have moved here from different areas that are moving towards our population needs. So we get all of these updates to the website, and there's stuff going out via notify me. Economic Development has been keeping doing some direct emailing, and I've also spoken personally to some of our larger just to give my heads up what's coming on the site. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Questions or comments to Daniel?
By way of pressure, Daniel, and probably for everybody who's listening as well, can you, I didn't have the benefit of hearing this at the work at the street. Can you just kind of give a basic outline of how this gets us closer to alignment to some of the other surrounding municipalities with regard to, you know, stormwater fees?
Yes, sir. So that, that median-sized non-residential property is a really good example. I think that the actual there for that property was $46 or so. The median for Wake County is around 30 feet, with Raleigh being a sort of a tiny example in the stormwater world, being at around $57 for that same property. So this starts to move us towards thinking about the size of towns that we're going through, right? We don't, I use the analogy, we don't want to construct a school that's immediate and too small for the amount of children here. So we want to be cognizant of the impact to our residents and commercial users, but at the same time, we want to set the fee for where the things are in line to be able to provide a local service that's in line with our surrounding communities.
I could add to that, Councilmember McGrath's question, the, one of the things that the consultants were very helpful in trying to identify those best practices across the state, and we've tried to apply as many of those as we can in this particular case. Like, one of the best practices that you heard during the retreat and that you articulated in a policy direction to staff, obviously, there's this current step that you've taken with the fee and then hopefully tonight with the changes to the to the related ordinance. But one of the other areas that council looked at was that gradation of residential units. Right now, what you have is a plan to go to a $5.20 per month for a residential unit. But there was also this best practice concept of a tiered system within the residential pieces, and that's one that that the council articulated continued work and exploration on. We weren't ready to do that at this point, and I think the council recognized that, but wanted to do some additional best practice review around that. So we'll continue to work on that over the next several years.
Yep. And as this is an enterprise fund that is designed to cover our operational costs, so if we get into this for a few years, when we can vet that tiered residential thing, it could potentially adjust those non-residential rates as we address some of the tax laws, we have to move into that proactive realm of inspections, maybe.
Any other questions to Daniel or comments?
Not sure why this just hit me now, but the ERU at 2930 square feet compared to impervious limits on existing lots or new lots that are being subdivided, those are not the same thing, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
So from a, from an engineering standpoint, there was assigned an impervious limitation to whichever project with drainage, to whichever stormwater control. And that's, well, that's just this is based on an aggregate of all the impervious depths of our system.
Residents, okay, got it. Thanks.
Other questions or comments?
Good, Mr. Mayor? If I could add just one, a couple of real quick comments. One, I want to thank Daniel and his team, along with, he mentioned earlier there, our Communications and Marketing Team, as well as our Economic Development Team, and Assistant City Mayor, or County Assistant Town Manager, Scott Chase. We've also, we've all been working really hard on this front over the number of years, but here recently with the efforts that we've got to go live on January 1. So I want to recognize those efforts, in particular, the useful feature on our website where a business can go and identify their property, and the software will give them an estimate of what their fee's gonna be in that January bill. So it's a really great feature, I think it's really helpful, and our team is working real hard to try to get that word out to everybody.
Thank you. Yep. Motion?
Motion to adopt revisions to Town of Holly Springs Total Ordinances, Chapter 8, Environment, Articles 5-8, and adopt new drainage policy, P-047.
Second.
Motion made in same law, favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you all, have a good holiday.
Thank you.
Item 14, new business, traffic calming and neighborhood safety program, Aaron Levitt, Utilities and Infrastructure. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Town Council. Tonight, I'm here to talk about the traffic calming and neighborhood safety program. And the purpose is to review the draft policy on some of the key components, and we are requesting your consideration and approving the policy. So first, I just want to talk about a little bit what we're hoping to gain with the policy. And, you know, first, I can say that none of this would be possible without council setting aside some money every year into the pay-go fund for traffic calming improvements. You know, just knowing that that money will be there at a reoccurring basis allows us to do a better job planning. We can work with Public Works better, accommodate their schedule. So I think that was the first step. And then the policy is a big step, but the goal were to, you know, make it really accessible and standardize the process. Really want to just reduce traffic violations, speeding, people running from stop signs. Have a clear prioritization system, and also create some sort of funding option for HOAs to partner with the town that want to go above and beyond their traffic calming needs. So some of the policy highlights include, you know, one-stop online request portal. We're gonna have several links on the website through police, through infrastructure, and then one right on the opening page to make it very clear. It's a very standard process for requests and implementation. It's very clear, you can report back to residents that submit requests, and let them know exactly where they are and what they can expect moving forward. Clear prioritization criteria, we had set that up. And we also really engaged with our police, as well as our residents, on the radar sign program. That's one of our preferred methods of traffic calming. And we'll go into some of those details in a little bit. Then we also did make some considerations for equity in the policy application as far as money. You know, there are some neighborhoods that may not be able to have funds set aside to do these improvements on their own, and we've taken that into account. And then some neighborhoods don't even have HOAs, so we'll go into those details. And so before we get too far in the background, well, talking about the background first. We went over this previously, but typically, the town receives about 300 to 400 yearly requests. This includes requests to police and engineering. Actually, in 2020, this rose to about 500 to 600 we're expecting. We think that's just because people are home and they have a little bit more free time on the means in some cases. So, and typical responses include police enforcement, intersection analysis. We receive requests for stop signs or speed changes, traffic calming devices, and also striping and signage improvements are typical requests. As part of, you know, creating the policy, we did a public input survey with the help of Cassie and Communications and Marketing. And we selected a few interesting questions and wanted to report the responses to you. And the first one was, you know, we asked people to identify the key issues they thought this policy should handle. And those were speeding, pedestrian safety, and then signage and striping, and those are ranked in order.
Yeah.
And we feel like we did, you know, go after those issues in that order specified. Now, as far as speed humps, that's something I did want to touch on a little bit more. As we've discussed before, there are numerous reasons that the town does not typically support installation of speed humps. And these are the increased emergency response time. We're talking about 15 to 30 seconds per speed bump that directly impacts our ISO ratings. You've got wear and tear on town vehicles, and I think, you know, when you really think about that, you gotta think of our big fire trucks. These really heavy vehicles going over the speed humps. We've had a lot of issues. There's noise, residents often complain about the noise if they live nearby. Maintenance issues, and also just a mixed response from the residents. Half of them may like it, and the half do not. But, but one of our questions was, you know, should speed humps be utilized, given their impact on operation and safety? And the responses were that 45% did understand both sides. They kind of still wanted them, but they understood that, you know, they do have a significant negative impact on other operations of the town. 41% did indicate that we should not utilize them, and then we only had about 14 that really just wanted speed humps, no matter what the impact. And then some, some more questions we had from the public input survey was 80%, 81% believe that we should create partnerships with our neighborhoods and HOAs to help implement these traffic calming improvements. And then 64% did think that we should, you know, set aside some funding to make sure that this whole process is equitable when there are neighborhoods that are having difficulties. You can utilize some of those funds to level the playing field. So one of the highlights would be the radar sign program. Speeding is really the most requested enforcement issue, hands down. But typically, when we go out and collect data on speeding issues, most of the time, we're about 3% over the, five miles an hour over the speed limit. That's, that's kind of a big speeding percentage. In the most serious case, we saw about 10%, where there was actually a missing speed sign. And we find that, you know, installation of the radar signs done by police really reduces speeding. In the past, Utilities and Infrastructure have worked with police to have those radar trailers set up. Moving forward, we're looking at kind of working with these more permanent and semi-permanent signs. And now on trailers, you mount to a hole, they display your speed. I think we've all seen them flashing, or not in my case. And then in the past, we've had a lot of HOAs that request you have to install these radar signs with their own funds. And the policy now creates a pathway for them to do this. About that? So now, if you do have a traffic concern or you want to make a request, we did, we'll actually say, we, I would say Communications and Marketing did a really good job creating a digital form. We are gonna be kind of dressing the form up a little bit with more of a welcoming message, talking about what kind of requests, you know, would be appropriate. And I think we're gonna really open the doors to people to submit something to us. These requests go to police and to Utilities and Infrastructure. They can be submitted online. You can call up the town at the number indicated there. You can also send an email, and then worst case, you can come into Town Hall, we'll help you fill it. Okay, so with that, are there any questions?
A couple of questions or maybe a comment. How much do the signs cost?
Well, the radar signs go anywhere from $3,500 to $10,000, depending on what that kind of features. Battery-powered, solar-powered. And so we're gonna allow the HOAs to purchase their own signs. And then we're gonna be looking at, as far as Utilities and Infrastructure, purchasing a few devices so that we can go out and collect data. And actually see what people are doing. And that's part of the, you know, the four concepts of the policy is, we receive a request, we have to go out there and duplicate. we have to go out there and duplicate, you know, collect data and make sure people actually are speeding.
Sometimes we find out they're not, but whatever, yeah. Other question, this is long-term and Kendra, since you're here too. I'm getting more and more nervous about people parking on the streets, both sides, particularly in my neighborhood. And I had trouble getting through with my car last week on that. Can we just talk about that later on and maybe come up with something that would discourage that? Because I, I said to somebody who is guilty of doing that, if a fire truck comes through there, both sides of those, those cars are going to get snapped. And just start for tomorrow, next day, whatever, okay? That's all. Other comments or questions?
I would second that real quick, just because I get so many emails about street parking in neighborhoods. I know the chief's here and I've fired off a couple of these HOA requests to him and Mr. Shafano several times just about residents, you know, asking if HOAs can enforce street parking and things like that. So an update maybe on that might, might be warranted just to provide some better guidance as this communications goes out about these changes for traffic calming. Maybe that's something we can couple with that.
You know, with the policy, we have three levels of response. And the level one response would be, you know, HOA education. We would partner up with HOAs, provide them information, hoping that they distribute it, you know, to the residents. You know, if that doesn't work or isn't as effective, then we can step in and, you know, really take a look at what's going on out there.
Good. Other questions or comments?
Aaron, you made a very compelling case why speed bumps might not be where we want to go. So what about the speed bumps we have now? If people say they're here, why can't we have them over there?
Right. And yet, you know, historically, I think it was 13 to 15 years ago, there were some speed humps installed along Stinson or by the library as well. We have those and also, you know, in really extreme circumstances where, you know, pedestrian safety is really in question, we may go ahead and utilize this as a speed hump. But, you know, I can think about the Teal Lake crossing where we have a greenway crossing. We wanted to make that crossing go under the, underneath the road with a tunnel due to constraints and flooding issues. We couldn't have a subfranian crossing. I actually had a, I do an upgrade on the street crossing. And so a speed hump or a speed table was implemented there specifically for pedestrian crossing. So that is an extreme case where we would take a look. And that's, I think, the policy, you know, one of its main goals was to be adaptable. We don't want to have hard and set rules. We're here to listen. You know, if there's really a big problem, I think, you know, we can, we can check that out and look into the effects of a speed hump like that.
So the answer would be that you guys can see that some of those pieces are the ones that you want to see? The ones you have now?
No, the ones we have now, we're, we're, we're not looking at removing them. They are in areas, you know, the park or the library. They're pretty heavy pedestrian generators. So we could take another look, but I would think that they would still be justified at those locations.
If you do the hunt center, we have to bring dynamite.
It's a little bit of counter message of saying, one of the reasons you don't want speed bumps is to, for public safety, to reduce the response time by so much for ISO. Wouldn't those speed bumps be something to consider? Because wouldn't we want to look at that, learn that? I'm on that. I'm on Valentine's.
It's, it's, it's a really good question and, you know, maybe we should look, take a look at removing some of those bumps and consider what impact that would have. So we'll look into it and report back. I think you.
The other. It'd be interesting to find out how that impacted our current top ISO rating that we got though, correct? So it might be interesting to get that, that discussion tied in. I mean, because we just did get that ISO rating in the last year, correct?
Right. We did get the ISO rating with the speed humps in place. However, I'm thinking if we install more speed humps throughout town, the ISO would be.
Agreed.
The drop down, but.
Agreed. I'm just saying that, that's all I'd be curious to find out is if that actually impacted our top tier ISO rating that we got as a look.
And I think what, and Mr. Levitt, correct me if I'm, I'm a speaker, but I think, you know, from a policy standpoint, the general default is that if speed humps are not a desired, you know, approach to traffic calming, there are a variety of other tools we can use and hopefully achieve a similar outcome. But I think what Mr. Levitt is saying is there might be unique circumstances, particularly around pedestrian safety, that, that you do an elevated cross. It's almost like an elevated wide crosswalk. And in, in some cases, and in many cities and towns, those are used for a unique reason. So I think that's kind of what, what we're getting at there, that there might be a unique reason where it does make sense, but as a default standpoint, the policy position works to avoid the installation of them.
This is something enough. I know that I've sent emails to folks that have had traffic concerns to, and then she's been great about home see them, but now they're supported. So when, can they still call the non-emergency police number if they see something like? Now they have more than one way to report. Does it matter? Because they might feel like it's more removed and more passive to go on and do a form versus, you know.
Right. Now, I can, I can speak for Utilities and Infrastructure, which is the same, but either way, if you call up, we're entering it into the online form. You know, it's going to the same location. So what, whatever people do, if they email us, if they do the phone call, it will get into the system into the.
It's not the sole place put in.
No, we did not want to have any sort of sole place. We needed a magic keyword, very accessible.
My last comment is more for passing. With the new form, we do look at making sure that there might be a keyword map or, you know, people come in and search, you might not think traffic calming and like the speeding, like other ways that people would think of it so they could find it very easily. And we just put this other transportation portal as well, or the, yeah. Transportation portal, sorry, yeah. Okay. Just trying to think of different ways. It's a new way for folks to interact. This strike, this stuff. I know it's not something that somebody would think of, that's why. Another way to say would be great. Good, good stuff. I know this will be well received.
Other comments?
Aaron, let me say that empowering the HOAs in this process, I think, is great. There's anecdote weight from what I hear. Their ability to take action when they think that it's necessary with the radar signs is great. Partnering with the town, I know we've had some early success doing that in our retreat. And the HOA there was very pleased with how the town handled that. I think it's awesome. It's like, you know, we, we all hear the same request. We want speed bumps, we want stop signs. We've addressed the speed bumps, the stop signs. Can you just really quickly explain why we can't just throw a stop sign at every four-way stop? Right. I can. So traffic engineering, you rely on the manual for uniform transportation traffic control devices. And this is a document that has warrants, you know, maybe there's eight warrants. You need to, you need a certain volume of cars going through intersection, you need a certain amount of pedestrians. If you meet these warrants, then a four-way stop is just enough. And install one and feel good about it. If you just install a four-way stop that does not meet these warrants, oftentimes is what you do, you create an unnatural situation. Maybe you put a stop sign on the wrong leg of the road. It doesn't seem to make sense, but it actually causes a situation where motorists get into more accidents when there's unwarranted multi-way stops. It's a very common thing to hear, you know, I was sitting at a stop sign and I went through and the guy blew through the stop sign. You know, there's this, you know, expected level of safety that really is not, is not present. So what happens when you install unwarranted stop signs? You see incidences rise, mostly with vehicles, but pedestrians as well. There's also, you know, issues with, with the sound, you know, squealing brakes. Some minor, some more minor issues, but really it's a safety issue.
So it's, it's almost counterintuitive. The stop sign could worsen safety, but engineering, a lot of things are counterintuitive.
It is.
And similarly, we've talked, and this is more for the people listening, about speed humps, how they can actually increase speeding because people will make up the time between the humps.
Yeah, they get over the hump and they.
Speed between them and then slam on the brake. So I love the concentration on the radar signs. I agree. I think they're going to be effective. And thank you again for empowering our neighborhoods to take action.
Thank you.
Thinking of which, with the radar signs, are those to be permanent in the neighborhood? I, I tend to see them more along like Holly Springs Road and even Ferry, kind of more thorough fairs. So it's hard to imagine a flashing radar sign that's permanent in a.
Right.
More of a neighborhood and a, next to houses.
Right. And I understand your concern. You know, I think there's going to be a few different types of radar signs we see out there. First one would be from Utilities Infrastructure or from the town where we go out and we're trying to duplicate the situation. We're trying to collect data. The sign might be up. It might not be even turned on. These signs have features where you don't need to have the speed displayed because actually that, you know, impacts your data because then people actually do slow down. And then you're not collecting that you need. So, you know, you might put one up that's not flashing, reflecting data. That'd be a few weeks at the most. Now, police have the trailers, same kind of thing with those. They're going to set them up for a few weeks, a month, and then move them somewhere else. Now, when the HOAs request one, they're actually requesting it just like they would request the speed hump. These devices are proven to, you know, reduce speeding just by making people aware of how fast they're going. So we do, you know, see a more permanent installation, you know, on a, on a sign pole. They're much smaller, the, the permanent ones, they're not that big with a solar panel. I've seen several of them in other towns and cities. Yeah.
Are there guidelines for where they can be placed along the, or where like? I'm thinking just next to somebody's house or.
Right.
Near somebody's driveway or in the neighborhood, you have a little bit more limited options.
Great question. And I would say that, you know, we, we don't want people just putting up radar sign wherever they want. When someone requests, submits an action request, they can say, we'd like to install radar sign in our neighborhood. And we'll go back and forth. Where do you want to put it? We'll try to put it on the property line where it doesn't impact, you know, the community as much, but it's still effective, right? Definitely in a high speeding area. But, yeah, we'll, we'll have oversight over the location and placement of the signs. And if we do need to have them moved for whatever reason, we can have them moved.
Can you quickly, I'm glad we talked on the HOA piece. That's, I think that's important, not only for residents to have an appreciation because we've had some questions over the last few months of which roads in, in our surrounding area are state maintained, which ones are city maintained, which ones are currently under HOA because they haven't been turned over to the town yet because they're still in development? So can you just talk to that briefly? So when we have people in a neighborhood that's a developing neighborhood and they think they're under, you know, the HOA or they think they're under the town's auspices, but those roads currently haven't even been turned over yet to the town for maintenance and for straights? Can you just talk to that so that, you know, maybe those that are confused in some of those developing neighborhoods might get a better understanding of that?
Sure can. So first of all, if, this really applies mostly to town-maintained roads. If there are situations on state-maintained roads that will have to kind of go outside the policy and the funding and all those other issues. But one of the main, you know, goals of a, of a policy are actually the exercise of creating the policy was to work with our development services team ahead of, you know, when these neighborhoods come in. You know, first neighbor requests a speed hump. So working with that department, we're going to really focus on the interconnections between subdivisions. You know, we have future stubout roads, you know, what can we put there to kind of calm traffic and plan ahead of time? How can we limit straightaways on roads, that sort of stuff? But getting back to your question, you know, if you're in a brand-new neighborhood and, you know, just moved in, maybe there's an issue where the, the road near you isn't, isn't adopted by the town. Typically, they're going to be in the town maintenance or state. So if you call up and you submit an actual request and there's an issue, we haven't adopted a road, we'll make sure that's where you're in. And honestly, we probably still move forward with the process, knowing that eventually it will be the problem.
Very good. Yeah, I think that, that, that map, I think Kendra sent it to me. But I think that map would be helpful to put on our, somewhere on our transportation portal, if you will. I know it's a challenge to probably keep that updated as it goes through, but, but certainly from the state-maintained roads, because I think there's, there was certainly a lot of confusion as to, you know, these are town roads. Well, they're in the town, but they're really not town roads. They're state-maintained roads. So there's, as you mentioned, a slightly bigger challenge. So as people start talking about speeding down Holly Springs Road or something, that's potentially a different, a different discussion at a different level.
Sure. I, I think adding a link actually straight to the DOT would be great.
Trying to summate the, the comments, I have to say this. These are mitigation issues. They don't cure the problem. The problem is up here. It's always been up here. It'll always be up here. This is a good move, very important move. It's not to be interpreted as secure and we have no more speeding, chief. It doesn't work that way. I wish it did. So I just want to make that comment. Anything else? Good? Hit it.
Motion to amend the town's engineering design and construction standards to include traffic calming and neighborhood safety policy.
Second of all favor.
Aye.
Close. Motion passes. Thank you, Aaron. Good job. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor? Yes. If I can just add one comment, a couple of comments related to that. I want to thank you and Mr. Levitt and his team for the work that they've been doing on this particular policy. It's a policy that you've been working on as well for some time now, maybe a year, year and a half. And just like the stormwater work, you know, this is important, community work. And I want to thank you for your time with that. And I also want to thank you for, in your adopted budget, was the first time that you've dedicated specific funding to help mitigate some of these traffic calming components. So thank you for that. Again, it's a start. You know, it's going to help and we'll continue to move forward. But I want to thank Mr. Levitt and his team for great work on this.
Thank you. I saw somebody walk in the door.
And Kendra Parrish on that one too.
Agenda item 15, New Business Resolution to Temporarily Relax Commercial District Light and Sign Ordinances for Holiday Lights. Beth, routes, Development Services, and John Shafano if necessary.
Good evening, everyone. So the purpose of the resolution is to help Holly Springs businesses spread a little holiday cheer during the COVID-19 pandemic holiday season. And we are requesting action of approving Resolution 2045. UDO currently restricts a variety of commercial signage and holiday displays in order to limit the size of signage, reduce safety risks and from impeding pedestrians or creating debris by blowing into parking lots and roadways as well as to maintain town aesthetics. As you all know, we are rewriting the UDO and we will be looking at this as part of the rewrite to see what we can do, if anything, to change the ordinances. But our current ordinance is just allow for a single strand of horizontal lights and it prohibits wind-blown devices such as. Historically, zoning compliance has enforced these regulations and we recognize that in 2020, it's been challenging for our businesses and we recognize we could all use a little extra holiday cheer. As Ms. Pax noticed earlier, or noted earlier, our traditional holiday celebrations are being reinvented through social distance activities such as the Happy Holidays decorations drive-through. This resolution will allow businesses to participate in festivities without the risk of zoning compliance issues. It's a one-time resolution. It would be effective through tonight through January 15, 2021.
Questions or comments of Beth?
I think just a quick one, just to, just to make sure that anybody listening is, or, we won't be the Grinch, if you will, of Christmas, but you may want to talk to your HOA if you're worried about some of these restrictions, because I know there are HOAs that do have restrictions. Just to make sure we're not suspending or we can't supersede HOA restrictions. So correct, correct me if I'm wrong, counselor there, but just to make sure that people don't get this and, and have a false sense that they can do something that their HOA currently prohibits. And then we get into a back and forth while the town says that, you know, we can do this and.
That is the correct statement. We work in tandem with HOAs. If they are more restrictive than we are, they trump us. But if we're more restrictive than them, then we trump them. So.
Correct. But in this case, we would be potentially less restricted.
So they would, they get to still enforce their rules.
For businesses though. This is really for businesses.
This is mostly for businesses.
I think this would be well received by several businesses that last year had some heartache about not being able to put up the table.
I think several businesses will be very happy.
I applaud whoever. I applaud whoever realized that this would be a great time to do something different. So
We are very fortunate. We have a great business community that likes to follow the rules. So I think that us relaxing this will let them be at ease and let them participate without feeling that we might do any enforcement. Especially here this year.
And then we'll just visit it after that and see if it all went well. If there's something we want to do again, we might still be in some sort of normal by next year anyway. But this is great. Thank you.
Counselor, any comments?
No, I was just going to mention that we don't have any regulation limiting really residential holiday displays. So this would just be a commercial regulation. And as Ms. Trout said, you know, we're going to get a chance to really tweak this during the UDO amendment. So if it's, if long-term it's not something you want to do, we
Anything else?
Good. Thanks for being proactive. This is a great idea.
Great. Thank you.
I want to take a motion.
Motion to approve resolution 20-45 to temporarily relax the enforcement of regulations regarding holiday displays for commercial property.
Motion made in second of favor.
Aye.
Close. Motion passing unanimously. And thank you again, Beth.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Agenda item 16, unfinished business, comprehensive transportation plan CTP steering committee. And that would be again, Emily and Patty. Development Services, welcome again.
Thank you. Good evening. So yes, I'm Emily and Patty with Development Services. And today we're just here to follow up from our conversation last time about the CTP steering committee. And so today's meeting as well, the purpose and action will be basically to appoint and finalize on the steering committee. Just to give a brief reminder of what a CTP is, it's basically a planning document that helps us to establish strategies that will help us meet our near term and long term transportation needs pertaining to pedestrians, bicyclists, transit, frequent highway. And we started the update process in October of 2020. And we hope to finalize the draft in December of 2021 and present it to council for adoption around early January of 2022. And the update process consists basically establishing a steering committee which comprises of technical experts such as Campo, NC DOT and Bo Triangle, and also included local residents and other private sector participants who work locally, who have knowledge and experience of our town. And so this list here shows you the 15 member steering committee. And at the last meeting, you gave us the go-ahead to go ahead and contact the first 10 agencies or individuals represented here. However, the individual that we contacted to represent the senior physical activity interest group is not able to serve. And so today, in addition to following up on the last five, we're also going to request you to appoint someone to represent the Holy Springs Senior Physical Activity Group. So basically, that's the action item that we're requesting from you today.
I'll take it from here if you don't mind. I think everybody got my wonderful missive in the mail email. My intelligent way to do this. So what I'm hoping is, let's go through it one at a time as quickly as we can. Town Council Representative, I had recommended Dan Berry or Tom McGrath. Let's just go from, let's go that way this time. Do you have anyone else to mention for Town Council, either Sean or Dan? You had a comment about this or not?
Yeah, I said last time, I'm happy to do it. If no one else wanted to do it, I talked to Councilman McGrath. He's also interested. I'm happy to yield it to him. I think that's fine. I'm doing the legislative stuff with Councilman Wolf, so I'm happy to focus on that.
Yeah, I'm happy to continue to do stuff with this since, you know, I've served on the campus, WOS board and others in the past. So I'm happy to continue to do stuff in the CTP.
You're volunteering.
Sure.
Okay. That's one for Sean McGrath. Christine, any comments?
All right, I'm
That's mine.
Yeah.
Fine.
Yep.
Fine. Fine. Sean McGrath. Vanpool bus rider. I had no candidate. I couldn't figure that one out. Did anybody have comments on that one or suggestions? Sean? No? Christine?
I don't. I have a bunch of names and an alternative plan, but not for that one.
Not for that? Dan, do you want to go?
Do not.
Yeah, yeah. Hmm. Any comments?
Mr. Mayor, there's a librarian, library provides the bus.
He's what?
There's a librarian that they bus each day. She'd be willing to serve on.
Would you do that first? That'd be awesome.
But does she live in Holly Springs?
The issue is she does live in Apex.
Yeah. It's for Holly Springs.
Well. Maybe it'd be better than none at all. That's a tough one. Vanpool or bus rider? We just don't have a whole lot of those.
Yes, sir. If I may interject, it's tough. These were just recommended slots. And we spoke with Sean and he said that we should also let you know, if you're not able to appoint someone, feel free to change that slot interest group to something else.
Do you have anybody in your mind?
Um, I was
How about the audience? Anybody?
I, I know someone from reading several documents that I think that person lives in Holly Springs. And I'm very new, so I don't know people, but I, we could reach out to them as well. But I know they, from what I've read, they ride the bus in Holly Springs.
May we leave that up to you at this point?
Sure, sir.
And Mr. Mayor, that's what I would suggest. If the council wants to have that slot, if you just want to delegate that to staff, we can do a little more research and just go ahead and try to point someone.
Is there a way to reach out on social media to our residents to see if anybody'd have interest?
I think there is.
To include potentially, you know, carpool, you know, carpool representatives. So they probably got much interest in our roads as if anybody tried to manage their way to schools in the morning and such.
Yeah, we're going to keep working on that one.
Somebody doing a carpool might be a good
Good idea. Thanks, Sean. On the high school, Holly Springs High School student, I have a strong recommendation. Tay Abibi, who's going to be a senior this year. She's an officer of the Mayor's Advisory Board. She's sharp and she's a female from Ethiopia. And she is incredible. Just my thought. And then we'll go down the line again, Sean.
I have a strong candidate. This young gentleman who's a 10th grader reached out to me six months ago saying he wants to know more about the town and do things. And his name is Brian Wright.
Say it again, please.
Brian Wright.
Brian Wright.
He lives out in the Father's Land area.
Okay.
And he's definitely very enthusiastic about this opportunity and has strong parental support as well to be part of that. So I'd like to put forth, I'm sure you mentioned it's also great, but I think Brian Wright would be a fantastic position.
Dan? Anybody?
I don't have anybody else to offer.
No. Okay, I guess we have two, two to vote on. Let's do it the easy way. All in favor of Brian, please say aye.
Aye.
All in favor of Tay, please say yes.
Yeah, both. I don't know anything about either of them beyond their names.
Right.
Or necessarily choose. I, I would, I would recommend potentially that, you know, we have two high school students, maybe one of them doesn't show up to some of the, some of the meetings or the committee meetings.
You both.
It doesn't hurt to have both of them. If they both sound motivated, then why not have both of them?
I agree.
Go for it.
Yes, sir.
All right, we got two. Senior resident at large, I had a suggestion again. George Kimball, longtime resident and very well connected to our town, I think would be ideal. Sean, I'm going to start with you again. Anybody else?
Have you talked to, have you reached out to Dorit? Please have to do it.
Been in my office several times.
He's awesome. Yeah.
He's terrific. No, Derek. Do I hear any objections? You think it's good? Sounds good.
Yeah.
I'll double check and make sure he did under, I didn't make sure I was clear. Resident at large. I just put down former council members, all of which would be good, I think. Jerry, Jimmy, Jeff. But that's wide open. So who else has other ideas? Sean, any ideas?
I don't have anything I would recommend.
Christine?
Yes, I have several names and actually we talked to them and didn't get back. So I think they would, they would, both Devin Colfield and Jamar Cobb.
You have to give it to me again. I'm sorry.
Devin Colfield and Jamar Cobb.
Devin Colfield. Yeah.
And Jamar Cobb. They are both longtime residents, but they're very well connected with the senior population and what they do, their roles.
Kind of like George.
They're involved. I think they'd be both excellent in that position. And if they didn't work out, I have, I have another name that was highly recommended, Danny Bronson, who as well, I have not
I have to say it again. I'm sorry.
The other person is Danny Bronson.
Danny?
Bronson. So my thought is if we didn't have, like there were some, these are all solid names. If we couldn't find other people, that these could be free that we could draw some to see who else would want to participate. If we didn't get somebody for the commuting ones.
Anybody else?
No, I don't think so. I have a couple of names. A few of the ones I talked to couldn't commit and the ones I didn't get a chance to talk to, I don't want to spurt. So
The one name I know of course is Pastor Kyle, who has been here since birth. Been in different generations, George Kimball, but pastor of the church. Close to how it's been to meet up.
You know.
He's a smart guy.
Devin Colfield is Reverend Lebrun's daughter. She participated in a meeting at the church, talking about the town history. So she would also be very passionate and excellent. And she's entirely respected.
All right. So what's our consensus? Who, who has lots? Pastor Colfield? Or Pastor Kyle? Yeah, that's fine.
I'm fine with that. If we can obviously get consent from him, so if we have it.
All right. So it's It's Pastor Kyle.
And if the Vanpool doesn't work out, I think that would
We'll work, work with that.
You missed, we had to also add the senior walking position. I reached out to somebody, if somebody's
Well, no, I thought, I thought that was George Kimball.
In fact, he was the resident large senior.
It's, it's Senior resident at large is the same thing.
Well.
I think Craig declined on the advocacy groups. So he was the one that we have to fill.
Again?
Craig Ashby declined, so he was the one we have to fill.
Oh, I see. Okay. I'm sorry.
Mayor, I did reach out to some on that list. That list was great. Whoever provided it. And I reached out to Susan Gold and she would be very happy to participate in this.
Say it again, please.
Susan Gold.
Susan.
Gold, G-O-U-L-D. If you look at the video for the outreach, police outreach program, she's in that video. She's very, yeah, she knows a lot of people and she's, she's very excited for the opportunity.
Good. Good, good, good. We're good. We're good now. Right?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And Madam Clerk, do we have all that? I think I do, but I'm not sure. All right. Thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you. Wasn't that bad. Okay, other business, COVID-19 update. Least I have is Wake County has 27,403 cases, 283 unfortunate deaths. Once again, our zip code, 741 cases and two unfortunate deaths. I am not discounting the importance of this issue at all. None. Except to say, I'm very proud of our zip code for as good as they can be doing. It's probably better than any place else that I know of. Secondly, we're talking about speeding. We already did that. Or I played the tie, so I will pass along. Who's next?
I'll just piggyback on what you had to say in there. And the governor today held a press conference where he spoke about vaccine distribution. And the great news is that the earliest we could see vaccines starting to be distributed by his estimation is mid next week or maybe the week after. There's some prioritization about what population
High-risk.
Starting with healthcare workers, followed by long-term residents and then moving into the high-risk populations of the morbidity. But it's great because our town has been doing a wonderful job of taking this seriously. Wearing masks when they're going out and avoiding non-essential trips outside the home. The other thing the governor did a couple of weeks ago was added the yellow, orange, red county upgrading system and Wake County continues to be in yellow, which is awesome. But it does still mean that there is significant spread, not no spread. So a couple of things that NC DHA S would recommend for all individuals in yellow counties. Continue wearing your masks at all times outside the home. Download the Slow COVID NC app. I don't know if this is something we talked about, but it's a great app you can download on your cell phone. It basically uses Bluetooth to ping off other people who have the app on their cell phone. And if one of those people tests positively entering the system and they will, the app will alert you that you have been in close proximity and even how close and for how long. And then you can get your flu shot if you haven't already. If you're symptomatic at all, get tested. Answer your phone. I think my generation is god awful at, but it might be a contact tracer. So just answer it. You can always hang up when it's a scam artist trying to get you to go over to money. Continue avoiding large gatherings and crowds. And if you must host or attend an event, ten or fewer, keep it outside or ventilate by opening doors and windows. Whether it's light at the end of the tunnel or almost there, but the, the point where people on the stairs and the people in this room and everybody in town is getting vaccinated is still months away. So we just need to keep at it.
I've been, to your point, I've been following California for some personal reasons. I'm glad we're North Carolina. Pete, you think? Good? Dan?
Just one thing. Last week before the holiday, I sent out an email to everybody about a proposed timeline for the town clerk and town attorney performance review. So I just wanted to remind everybody about that and ask for your responses to either concur or propose alternate timelines. That way we can just go back and confirm that with our attorney and our clerk for that. That's a reminder I had. And if we can complete that this week, that'd be great. First class then.
You all good on it? Yes?
Yes, all good.
Christine?
I had a question for Randy and Linda. We are getting emails about the tree. However, those emails, I believe, it's a judicial consideration. So even though you tell, telling us to have the emails, does anybody contact them to say if they want that to be part of our discussion? For that, that they have to be done with notarized version, right?
They want to provide testimony. Correct.
Yeah. So we've received quite a few that now it's public comment, but we can't consider those. How do we go back and look at those that we've received?
Somebody from Development Services, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is the special exception use hearing that's coming up doesn't have anything to do with the tree and that would have to be separate issue?
Don't have any.
We don't have I will double check with Development Services and get back to you. We had checked with Randy a while back and I thought at that point, if we wanted any of that feedback, we needed to let them know.
Right.
They have to be in a more formalized process.
Right. And I think early on, you know, the caution there was until that development I think early on, you know, the caution there was, until that development request got maybe more kind of collated in terms of what was going to be requested out of caution, because we knew that there was going to be some component that was going to be a quasi judicial. We were advising you just at this point to hold back and not to engage in that conversation. We'll find out if there's some, given where they are in the process and any new information around it, and which pieces will be the quasi judicial piece. We'll give you an update in the Friday briefing memo to give you a little more clarification on that.
And my request is if we do have to go back to the folks that feel like they've talked to us, somehow we'll go back to them and say, actually, you need to do a different process.
Good point.
Okay. And I just want to shout out a couple of people in this room, Mark and Cassie, and all the work that you guys did with the historical plaque. That was a phenomenal event and a very special moment for many, many people. And I thought the town did a great job, the plaque is beautiful, I know public works installed it in the perfect location. But that was a very special moment for very many, so thank you to the town. And I know that those involved on the committee, I have the pleasure of being on that committee, we're just really pleased to see that come through, and George Battle, all her work, I mean, really, it's revision, and I just wanted to say how much we appreciate the passion for our history. And it was just a great moment for the town.
Sean?
Yeah, one update from the last CJ cog meeting. They talked to a bunch, CJ cog staff is looking at some resiliency programs. And the resiliency they were talking about was more of an economic resiliency for municipalities. You know, from that perspective. So, I asked a question, because they, they asked if anything was being missed, and so I asked if they would also consider the discussion of personal resiliency programs that are out there. So, I know there are some of those out throughout the, through the DOD that talk about, you know, ways that people can become more resilient through tough times. We are certainly in them right now, and so I'll make that pitch again. You know, holidays can be the best of times for some people, and for some, they can be the absolute worst of times. So, you know, worth, worth your time for someone who you may think may be going through some of those tough times, it may not be as resilient as you think, just to ask that simple question of how they're doing. This may be the best time to do that right now during this holiday season, so.
That's a great reminder, believe me, every, every meeting we have, we should remind. I see it in our neighborhood. And I take hold of the comments and say to my neighbors that are involved, how you doing? Come on down. Buy a Coke. The only other thing I want to say is, is I've never seen a town, this town, light up the way it's doing now. And the reason I say that is, everywhere you go in town, it seems like everybody is trying to beat the other ones next door, the numbers of lights. I fell into the trap, I fell in the trap. We have lights now, and my neighbor has lights, so it's incredible. You turn around the corner, and all you see is lights. I love it. So, with that, I will turn this over to the town manager, Randy Harry.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate that. Mayor, Council, two items tonight. The first one, well, they're both related, but for a little bit of a backdrop on it. Over the past couple of years, I've been really impressed and appreciative of staff's effort to rethink some of the ways that we've engaged with the community. And our staff's been working really hard on that. And leading up to COVID, we had, you know, just a great level of momentum. And I've been really with that community engagement component. I've been really pleased that staff, during COVID, we've had to adjust, just like everybody else in terms of our community engagement and what that looks like. And so, obviously, we've had to convert to virtual forums for community engagement. I want to thank those residents who have participated in those, and to remind you in the community, we have two upcoming virtual community engagement events. And the first one coming up here is the Holly Springs Road Widening Project. It's a virtual public meeting, it is this Thursday, December 3rd, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. And residents can go to our town website and the calendar and find the links to join in that, to learn more information and provide feedback and ask questions. The second one is a, is the Parks and Recreation Master Plan Virtual Public Meeting. And that is going to be on Wednesday, December 16th, from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. I know that that's oftentimes a church night, but just in coordinating, that was one of the scheduled times that work. But want to encourage any of you, and along with the community, we'd love hearing your feedback, your engagement, and a chance to understand and learn and share their thoughts and hopes and desires for where we go on these two fronts. So, thank you for that, Mayor, and I'll turn it back to you.
Councilor, do we have a closed session?
No, sir, no closed session. I just did want to update you that Paul Allen has taken a job with the city of Fayetteville. So, we wish him well. So, the office right now is at 50% capacity, but we'll, we'll do everything we need to do. So, that's all I have for you.
50% capacity? You're being humble. I did have a chance to wish Paul the best on his way out the door, okay, so I appreciate that. Paul did a good job, or Paul did a good job. Since there is no closed session, what do we do next?
Question to adjourn. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for.